Okay. It's 7:13 and I'll call the meeting to order. This is a special meeting of the Kent Conservation Commission, so therefore we cannot change our agenda. And so the first item on our agenda would be to accept and amending if necessary the minutes of our meeting last week, which was June 8th, 2022. So has everyone had a chance to look over the minutes and are there any changes needed?
Not very good.
Motion to accept the minutes as written.
Okay, and may I have a second please?
Carol, that would be you.
He's not. I'm seconding.
There you go.
I'm here.
If we don't.
I present.
I wouldn't make the voting number.
We can elevate Mike for sure.
Yeah. Um, so.
There you go. Good work, Mike.
Any opposed? Raise your hand. And seeing none, that motion carries. Thank you. The next item on the agenda is public comment and the record can reflect that there are no members of the public here with us tonight. Which brings us to the P O C D. Um. So. So look, I guess we can start by. I just wanted to. You know, call it to your attention. I don't know. Here comes Wendy. Good. I hope you all received the email earlier today, so you do have a copy of that earlier correspondence that we sent in, you know, to, to the P and Z just about a year ago.
So I have to have a chain that from that tree.
You know, it's really interesting, Yose. We can't quite trace the chain either, but Matt Winter had a copy of it. So. I remembered preparing it. I remembered mailing it. I had a Word doc copy and a PDF copy. I, you know, it was prepared in conjunction with a meeting that was held on June 29th. And.
Well, as long as P and Z got it, that's also a matter.
It is a reflection of our discussions.
I just don't have. I'm here.
I know.
Thanks. Sorry about that.
That's all right.
Hello.
That's all right. We're just getting into it, you know, when we, we, we decided to run through the, the minutes and the public comment. And so we were really just embarking on our conversation about the P O C D. And then the other thing again is that, you know, the work that we do tonight is in preparation for the public hearing that the P and Z is hosting about, about the P O C D draft. June 30th. Um, so. I. I think that, you know, the last meeting, we identified a few issues that we wanted to try and hash out a little bit more. Wendy, I want to thank you for the work that went into the preparation of, of your email.
A bit rough. It would have been much better if life had gone as planned.
Yeah, without, you know, with a reminder that we're recording. Posting on the town's website, you know, I'm glad that you're, that you're here with us at this meeting and know that, you know, even that you would have liked to, to polish. I, you know, I, there were a couple of things that I had questions about in your email and I think we could, you know, maybe others did as well and we can work through them. But I think that the language that you used easily forms the basis of comments that we might put in a letter. I, you know, to the P and Z. I, I guess we should just check that through everyone. Is everyone else feeling like there's good material here that we might be able to provide as commentary?
Well, I think Wendy could very well just get this whole thing to be in the individually. And we can refer to it and we say we agree with most of what Wendy recommends in there. And let them figure out what, which of that stuff they want to put in there in the P O C D.
Are you concerned?
I don't know that I agree. I, I think that I would like to pick a few bullet points coming specifically from us. You know, if Wendy wants to do something in addition separately, that's one thing, but I, I was really under the impression that we were going to come up with a few things that we wanted to bring to their attention. And I think we were very close to what some of those are.
Yeah. And I should mention, I won't be here in July. If, if I live that long, I'm going to Maine. So. I won't be here to defend myself or anything else.
The meeting, the P and Z meeting is on June 30th, isn't it?
June 30th. It's not.
And it's online, so.
I don't think where Wendy goes, she gets online.
Okay.
That's the beauty of it. Um. So if you want, um, I don't know if it makes sense for, I need to bring that email up.
I agree with Carol that I think it would be sensible to pick at least a few points of emphasis that we could all put our weight behind. I think it might be more impactful.
I do too. Yeah, I just assume not to have a unique bullet on my back.
Okay, understood.
I mean, I mean, bird's eye, but whatever. Yeah.
So, I mean, one thing I do want to show you is that I did the very beginnings of a draft letter modeled off of the letter that we did earlier. I, I took, here's the part. That is, you know, I, I took Wendy's introductory comments and basically made an, in this, to this point, number three, that Kent's P O C D needs to address issues and present goals that are related to clean energy. And I used Wendy, your, your language as the lead in. And then I began to pick out some specific clean energy goals, but that is where I ran into just a few questions. And I was hoping that I might be able to ask you about some of those things and we can.
I'll try.
Yeah. So, um. So now I'm going to just stop for a moment and share your actual email because that's what others have seen. Right, so, see if I can scroll down into. Okay, so where we get to the for simplicity sake and the, you know, the kind of the specifics that you mentioned. I, I had in brackets, you know, this idea of, I, you know, incentivize the widest possible use of subsidized energy audits as, you know, I mean, that's, that's kind of a no brainer, but how do we incent, you know, like, what's the suggestion in terms of incentivizing it? Is it that, you know, people get a tax break if they've done that? Is it that I, you know, there's a coupon from?
Yeah, I, I think, you know, maybe we could come up with something clever like a coupon, but, but this will also be done following what I hope will be a successful energy fair and program. So that all the reasons why an energy, you know, we're going to be able to show people how they're going to save money right out of the bat, you know, right out of the gate. But yes, I think something clever, or we can have a lottery or anything. They, the, the audits, which cost a lot of money, but not to the individual are really something of value. I think, you know, there's just been a lot of illiteracy about this. I think we need to convince people that this is really worth doing. And I think they'll probably want to do it. And I hope this fair will help that.
So in, why don't we, I mean, because we're not really sure of how these could be incentivized, but we have some ideas, maybe just leave it broad. But this is kind of the, you know, this is the dance that we're doing in, you know, in terms of both what we want to encourage our town to do, and not P and Z, but our town collectively. I, you know, when we have to recognize that not all of the things are going to be as specific as, you know, they could be. Because we don't really know yet how we might incentivize, like, maybe the Conservation Commission dedicates a small component of its budget to providing coupons, or maybe there's, you know, some other thing, or maybe it's just promotional or, or all of that. But that's, you know, I, I did have those kind of question marks on these bullets because I wasn't sure if you were thinking of something specific or, you know, or, or just more general.
I have two, two resources that are going to be available to me next week to get that answer. One is I have another online meeting with the PACE people and they have a whole workbook. And I simply will ask them, what, what have other towns done? And that will be one answer. But secondarily, I am now a member of this thing called the Connecticut Clean Energy Network, which meets the third Thursday in the month. And I have made such a noise about P O C Ds that we're going to be devoting the hour and a half long chat room next week to this very subject. So I will have the benefit of that information as well. And this is a terrific organization. It's, it's existed under the radar all this time for me. But it's a very lively group and, you know, it's people from Sierra Club and all kinds of places, but every one of them works on a P, a P O C D somewhere and they're all unhappy with their P O C Ds without exception. So I'll just mention that, but there will be answers.
I'm using that everyone's unhappy with their P O C Ds because the only way to get happy with them is to actually like do them, right? Like, I, I think that that's like part of it here is that, you know, it's not the P and Z's job to do the P, P O C D.
Well, you know, I've wondered about that, why, why it all comes down to that, but that's what we're stuck with. But some towns spend, they go to 200 pages and they still don't have any means of accountability. I mean, it's fundamentally something's very wrong here.
Right, but that is up to the people of the town. It is totally not up to the planning and zoning commission. And I mean, that, it takes recognition that, you know, all of the town agencies and the townspeople are in this together. I, you know, it's never going to be the case that, you know, we're going to tell the P and Z how they need to implement the plan because the P and Z is telling us how we need to implement the plan.
But I think our regional P O C, the COGS can help us. I think. I think we've all sat back too long and just let this happen.
But I think our, our opportunity here tonight is to alert P and Z of what verbiage we think is missing and we would want them to look at and include and address.
Yeah, that's why I, I sent you those two small towns. They're really short.
Um, I only saw one. Did anyone else get Eastford? I thought.
I gave about Ashford.
Were they really? Oh, okay. Well, I'm sorry. They, it went, I don't know how that happened. It was 11 o'clock at that point, I guess. Okay.
I mean, to your point about, you know, who is really responsible for making this stuff happen, Connie, do we put our money where our mouth is? And say, the Conservation Commission in partnership with the following organizations will work to incentivize the widest possible use of subsidized energy audits.
I mean, we can. I, I don't, you know, last week I expressed, I, you know, I personally don't know how valuable that is. And here's why. I think that it would take quite a bit and almost be, you know, create a situation that was more adversarial with the P and Z to try and like correct every single, you know, to, to have something that is so lengthy there, we're injecting ourselves, you know, in every page. I feel like our best bet as the Conservation Commission is, you know, like Carol said, you know, to make sure that there aren't any glaring omissions, especially on things that we would like to work on, like energy. And when the P O C D gets adopted at a town level to begin.
I mean, that, that, I thought your point last week was really important, that, you know, that it's, it's a living document that has to be interpreted. But if the language is not there, then we don't, we, we don't have it to, to then play with. So we want to get that, the language that we want in there.
Yeah. Yeah. So. So just scrolling down, just a moment, there were a couple of ideas that I just wanted to make sure I was understanding you, Wendy. And here, let's see. So this idea of work with developers, architects and homeowners who apply for site approvals have been building permits to encourage siting of new buildings or additions to take advantage of solar energy collection systems and look at residential development road designs, like that, to me, I think would be very hard to do under our current structure of regulations and Yose, maybe, you know, maybe you have some thoughts on this, but I, I just don't see how, like, I think I see the value in that idea, but I don't see who works with or how you get them to do it.
Well, with subdivisions, you have a pre-application meeting where you can discuss things like layout and so, and that's, that's a place where planning and zoning commission could bring up these energy things to the developer or the engineer. With other, with just zoning applications, which is 99% of what we see in Kent. I don't think you have those pre-application meetings. There, I guess the land use officer could bring it up. So have you, have you looked into energy efficient sighting and position, et cetera?
Then the next one to Yose, I mean, I, I just, I see these as a further leap because I just, I don't think our regs provide right now for, you know, they, they do talk about, you know, landscaping and trees and site plans often do have trees, but to make it, you know, to, to to somehow have the zoning regs and permits, you know, talk about the siting of the trees for shade and energy seems a little bit like, that's a couple of steps forward from where we're at right now.
Surely. We do have some language that says, prefer using native trees and things like that. So I mean, in that thing, you can also say something about provide shade for the house preferably.
And what does where appropriate right into development permits give backs in density? What does that mean?
There are places where they will trade, they will let you have more housing density in exchange for more clean energy and you know, practices. If you, if you will follow and offer more solar, more, more tree strategies, more heat pumps, more, any kind of thing. You, you could, you could win a 5% additional density or something of that sort.
So that would be something in the toolkit of P and Z potentially under some new regulation to incentivize some of the above items.
Yeah, these, I promise you, they are written into zoning, you know, finding them. I'm hoping I'm going to get a bunch of examples. The meeting last month was canceled, so I lost a whole month of what was promised. But there are these regulations. They may be in bigger cities for the most part, but it does seem that's where we're headed. So. You know, I think, I think the hard, the largest thing we would be looking for is greater literacy amongst all our commissions on what makes a difference. Right now, we are all, we're all without sufficient knowledge. But we know it's been done. We know there are studies out there. We know there are states, New York State has a much more advanced set of regulations. They have a lot more towns too. But.
What if we suggest that the P S C D says to incentivize clean energy solutions and then the efficiency wherever possible and find, find ways to do that.
And to be on the lookout for new good ideas, which we can incorporate into our zoning.
Yeah, we don't have to go into specifics, but we can say that the P S C D should, should say that they want to incentivize that.
So.
Find ways to do that.
Yeah. So rather than have, you know, these specific work with developers and, you know, to really, you know, encapsulate this into, you know, look for those models that best incentivize the use of clean energy technologies. I and implement those practices.
Including through zoning standards.
Okay. Okay. So I think that kind of takes us. You know, I think that, that kind of maybe maybe in terms of the specific bullets that really you know, that, I don't know how many specific bullets we need to include under that. Were there other things that, you know, are, that we think, you know, other ideas that are the specifics that we know that we want to get in?
Well, I think a common problem. I certainly ran into some of it when I went for solar is that the regulations at the moment, none of the procedures are truly clear. There's a lot of hemming and hawing. There are roadblocks in a way that are probably just leftover from old practices. I would just like to see the, some of that cleaned up so that if, if you go for a standard solar installation of a certain size or wattage, you know, that's not extraordinary, you ought to be able to get it approved almost automatically if your current regulations allow for that. I think right now there's probably anybody who wants solar, wherever it is, going to have to go through a lot of hoops because we really haven't adapted to this yet. I get that from other towns anyway.
I'm uncomfortable making a blanket, blanket statement like that because I do believe that P and Z has worked really hard to to construct regulations that can be fairly and objectively applied. And to think of the scenarios where there might be unintended consequences. And I don't know that, you know, I mean, this is like, like, like the idea of, you know, of skirting some fees or, you know, waiving fees, you know, for, you know, for, for clean energy proposals. I mean, that seems like a no brainer, right? Although, you know, as we just found out at the Kent Land Trust, you know, some of those fees are state mandated and the P and Z is constrained in what it can and can't do. So, you know, I, I, I just wonder, like, do we know enough, you know, do we know enough to make a recommendation as concrete as that? That, you know, that the P and Z might not be able to do, no matter what, how it feels.
Well, at the least I would ask them. You know, it's, it's some near, near date to review all the regulations that might impact clean energy, modern technologies. And see if they are as efficient and with as few roadblocks as possible. I recognize there are always going to be unique applications that, that take something extra. And another thing, I don't know whether we have, P and Z is ready for this new legislation, which now permits community solar. Since it's so new, I would imagine that we don't have a way to accommodate to that easily yet.
So once P O C D is adopted, then P and Z reviews its regulations. It's on a 10-year time clock. And so there, they have every intention of reviewing the regs I, after the P O C D is adopted, with an eye towards the changes that are already included in the P O C draft and recommended. And once we might recommend it. And so that would be a really good opportunity, I think, for the Conservation Commission to provide education and models for the P and Z to look at as it revises its regs.
And Wendy, your energy task force, once that gets off the ground, it'd be a great thing for, for your task force to look at the regulations, see which ones can be improved on.
And certainly that will be part of what we hope to do, but, you know, at the moment, we don't have any standing at all. So.
Well, any resident, they're standing.
Yeah, but.
You could ask the town to create a subcommittee and a charge for you, but then you'd have to warn and minute.
Yeah, that I know.
You don't, you don't want to do that. You just don't want to do that.
I, I don't think so. And then we'd have to have a budget and a whole lot of.
No, 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 no. That's, the model you laid out at the last meeting was, was much, what's much better, will work much better for you.
Okay. So besides clean energy, are there other ideas that we want to get into a letter that hopefully would be three pages at most of commentary that would go to the P and Z in preparation for its meeting?
Well, I think the verbiage of climate change, those words have to appear a lot more.
Make a lot more a meeting.
Um, I mean, they're just not, it's just not in there. So whether it's, we're not saying, you know, we're saying that as a whole is a general topic that it needs to be addressed more, but we want to make sure that the verbiage is in there.
Well, how about this? We, Governor Lamont and the state has now declared that they want to be 100% carbon neutral or some phrase like that by 2040. At the very least, I think it would be appropriate for the P and Z and their regs to formulate a plan how we're going to get there. We're either going to say.
That's never going to be the P and Z.
Okay, however it's done.
Recognize this and.
However, however it's done, I really don't care, but if we're going to have wishlist, a lot of towns are saying, Governor Lamont wants us to do this, we're going to do it. And it's in their P O C D. I don't know how they do it and we can't. I don't know. That's, I'm not, you know.
Well, the state has a lot of money to give out. We don't.
Well, and also the state's goal is a state goal. And it is wonderful for municipalities to adopt an aligned goal. But it's, it's the state's goal for itself, which is not the same as saying that municipalities all have that goal now, just because they made that goal. So I think it is fine to ask that, you know, a municipality like Kent sets similar or aligned goals for itself, knowing that the state is going to work on these things. And it's absolutely consistent. But it also, it's not Governor Lamont wants us to do these things. Governor Lamont set those goals for the state. I, it's.
And it also has a P O C D, right?
If you've noticed, and I hope you did, climate change is the very. First thing addressed in our P O C D. That's, it, it starts with a preamble. And the very first chapter that is substantive is on sustainability and resiliency and the very first. Paragraph under that climate of climate sustainability on page 20 starts with the words climate change. I actually thought that the P N Z, uh, and well Glenn Chalder really. I heard loud and clear from many people, including us, that climate change needed to be in the P O C D and that it really colors a lot of. You know, what is going on uh throughout the chapters.
Okay, then I feel much more comfortable with that. Okay.
But, but I come back to saying is, do we have any mechanism? To ask ourselves periodically. Whether we're doing anything about it.
I think that that is a really good point, Wendy, and I drafted language on that to go in our letter, which I'll show you. Hold on. Let me stop sharing.
I mean, that is frankly my biggest issue.
Sharing, hold on. Uh, did, did, where is it?
Yeah, so that could go in the conclusion, right, in chapter six.
So, so take a look here because this additional focus and direction are needed on planning implementation. Um, but then I read the P O C D draft again and. There's a section on implementation. It's at the end. It's on pages 102 and 103. Uh, but there is every intention within this plan of implementing it. With allocations of responsibility to different entities. And they use that same suggestion, Wendy, that you did. Of coming together for meetings to evaluate progress. So I'm just not even sure that we need to say this. Because I think they're going to say, you know, we said that already, you know.
I agree. I agree. But Connie, what about your other point that they didn't use the word conservation in the table of contents?
Well, I, you know. I feel about that the way that I feel about that, but I'd love to hear your thoughts on it.
No, the way you said it made sense to me. So how do we? Is it the, is it the word or is it the concept that we're worried about?
I mean, there's a lot of conservation in there.
Yeah.
Certainly. It's just not, not in a chapter title.
I think the concept is fully there, Carol.
Yeah.
The word in the, the. Contents and, and.
That's just an editing issue. That's not really.
Exactly, and I don't know how.
We don't, we don't need to go there then.
Okay, well, as long as you guys.
I don't mind going there. I mean, I don't mind going there, Connie. I, I think that it is an editing issue, but I also think we're at that point that they want to hear that, so. I don't mind putting that in there, but I don't want to in any way reflect that. It, it, we're not changing the content of those chapters by changing the title, is all the.
No, I think, I just think that, well.
But I think you do express your feelings about priorities. I mean, words do amount, t- titles count. So I think the stronger than you, that you can make them, the simpler, the concept for the public to. Take in, the better. If, 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 if we believe that we need strong. Efforts on, from all our commissions and sustainability groups. To do a better job on conserving energy and, and using. Non-carbon resources. Then I, I think it's good to herald it in the titles. Or in the bold or whatever it has to be.
I mean, I was just really struck by the placement of P A four 90 in the section about scenic. Uh, because to me, P A four 90 is not primarily about scenic. Uh, and scenic isn't even in. The, like, I, I don't know, i- is it even in um community assets? Or is it in the development section? I, it's in, it's on page 50. So scenic comes. Right at the very end of community assets. I don't, I, I just, I don't know. I found it. A little week. I found this draft a little week on conservation in terms of its organization of the concepts that we know to be. Associated with conservation.
I think you could mention in this letter that the B A four 90 uh is, is not. Correctly used the place there. And then at the same time mentioned that map where the, the. For the scenic resources and map of scenic resources and the main thing in there is P A four 90. And then there's a separate map with P A four 90. So it, it doesn't, P A four 90 doesn't belong in the scenic resources map. And um. It could be discussed in a different way. As part, maybe it should discuss a bit more as one. Form of conserve, of temporary open space conservation.
Do you all feel we're getting doing enough to support better waste, waste management procedures, better. Composting, better, I mean, that whole field of. Waste disposal now is, is becoming a massive problem. Are we doing enough?
Do we have to finish the B F four 19 conservation thing before we go through waste or what?
We could be finished if you're ready to go on. I would, I would put maybe under this whole concept of conservation though, because we did talk about, and I don't know how strongly you all still feel about it. Uh, the inclusion of. Uh, of two additional town character areas, which.
Yeah, that, I think.
That are blue and may dilute the concept of town character as opposed to, you know, when half the town is. Designated town character area. I'm just not sure what the value of that is anymore. And I don't know where it came from.
Probably came from that survey.
No, it didn't come from the survey. I think it was just Glenn's own idea. But, but like I said, the um Cobble, Cobble Hill. Um, behind the village center isn't uh more scenic or visible than. The hills on the other side of the river, which also aren't town character areas. So I don't see why, why this should be. And then the dirt roads, almost all the dirt roads are incorporated in one of the other town character areas already. It's more a feature than a area.
I think if we can ask them to um engage in. Explaining how they came about them and then we can make more of a educated decision, but I think we're.
Oh, I, I think the.
Reading more into it probably.
Um, it shouldn't just be brought up uh. Outside of a town character study. I mean, town character study was done and um. We should leave it at that, I think, for now. Unless the whole study gets redone.
Uh, do you guys want to move on to talking about, uh, you know, about waste management and sustainability? Is that?
We're not seeing your screen anymore. If you were planning on showing, oh, okay.
I would rather see your faces, but if you would like me to show it, I think that's fine.
Well, I think it was, it was definitely helping structure our conversation.
I don't have anything about waste management in that draft right now. I, I stopped with Wendy's points.
Uh, there was another.
I think there could be more about recycling in there and um mention organics. Try, uh, that we should promote um organics collection and recycling. That's.
Does it really need to be mentioned, Yosef? We know that the grant is out there and we're going to be implementing it in the next three months.
Well, I think, yeah, that, that's something.
Part of the record.
Conservation development, yeah.
Low hanging. Uh, is recycling really not in this draft at all? I.
Well, hardly.
What does that mean? Do you know where it is?
Um, let me check my notes.
Because I found, I, did you guys find there is stuff about electric vehicle charging stations uh in here?
I thought they did a great job with that part. I learned a little bit.
Feel like it must have been in sustainability. But. Ecological, energy. You know, there is, I mean, a very meager section on energy sustainability in here, uh, you know, right up front. Second page of when they started talking about the text. Do you feel like there was something about the transfer station in here?
Oh, in, in um, chapter two. Uh, under. Yeah, let me see. It was in the sustainable action list. Yeah, in, in the sustainability action list, strategic materials management, number nine, nine fours. Develop a food waste prevention campaign or program. And, and nine three recycle additional materials and compost, compost organics. I think that's about the only mention that has been made about recycling as far as I remember.
I mean, do you think? That's sufficient though for us to be able to work on it with the town and provide the town with resources so that they can move forward and make improvements? Cause it's us, we're going to be the ones doing that work. Or the sustainability team.
For example, there's no, I'm not hearing that there's any uh. Method of measuring. What, what further things we're going to do? I mean, we're going to take more pounds, more tons, more, more of this material. Uh, are there any goals?
Quote.
Our quota, is there anything there? And do you want to be held to that quota?
Because we are, we are going to be the ones who do this. I just want to make that clear.
Right, well.
Has nothing to do with the transfer station. Town government does and we can provide some support. And if there's going to be change, we need to be involved in it. But it's not going to, the P N Z, th- they don't care. If we want to set our own quotas that we may or may not make, then, you know, that's. But that, that is why I think it's better. To leave it kind of open because I don't know that we know enough. Right now, I would rather not have rigid things, but I, I agree that it's great to have. The yearly or more frequently meeting to review the P N Z and to say. You know, we did something towards this. We didn't do something towards this. There's something new with this, you know, and to, to map progress that way. Is it important to have in the P O C D that we actually are going to? Reduce the dollars that we spend. Months more than anything else.
But it's clear, the way it's written now. Um, that they, um, it's, if they talk about the transfer station and it talks about. Um, you know, the various things that are going on there. Um, with enough that we could then. Uh, in a general way that we can always then have input. I mean, you just said that the, the town just sets up the, the transfer station is. Um, I, 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 I don't have it, the whole P, I don't have it all in front of me of what paragraph you're, where you're looking at right now. If, if that has enough. But I definitely agree with you not to be specific about what we want to do, but just that we want to be able to have input. Where are you in the document, Connie? We, we're, it talks about transfer station.
I, yes, was, it's in chapter two.
Well, it's like on uh page twenty one under ecological sustainability. There's one line. Um, and then in the page twenty three. In the sustainability Connecticut list. But then in the action list on page twenty four, uh, there's no mention of it. And that's probably the one we're going to look at. Uh, if, if there would be a meeting every year, you look at those, did any of those action steps get taken? And there's no mention of reducing waste. Um, increasing recycling, increasing uh. Collection of food waste.
That's the way that I read that. It's pretty clear that Glenn had no idea what those measurables should be because he worded that. Develop and implement strategies in each of those areas. So I actually see that as a conscious choice not to get more specific.
I, I, I'm, I'm okay with that too.
I think. I understand the overarching point you're making, Connie, about not being overly precise and trying to hold us to standards that. May not be a risk, realistic, or maybe some standard that's a moving target. So we don't want to. Go after something that might not be appropriate two years from now, but it's not like the P O C D is legally binding. So if you said something that's. A bit ambitious, it's not like. You're hurting yourself, is it?
No, why can't you just be ambitious without it saying it in the P O C D so black and white?
Because then at least you have something on paper holding yourself accountable for being ambitious. Otherwise, why do we need the document?
How will the citizens know if we're doing our job?
They should get involved.
We never needed it in the past.
Yeah, I'm not sure that it's ever been used, so.
So I guess if the point is that the P O C D.
I use it for land trust matters mostly. We have not used it as a conservation commission.
Okay.
And I would say that until the last year, most of our community didn't even know what P O C D stood for. So um. You know, we create all these documents because they're state mandated, but. Um, those of us that might refer back to them. Aren't being controlled by them. They're.
But it also.
Your sky's the limit.
Do we think uh what's going on and what your priorities are? You need, you need to be reminded of that every show.
So the way I see this opportunity is it's an opportunity for us to prove our partnership and to make what already. Is a fairly substantial draft better. And I think if that is the approach that we take. That we will get a lot farther in making our comments. Then if we approach this as a document that needs to be corrected. Substantially modified or is unsuitable.
I think we're all in agreement with you. I shouldn't say that. I'm in agreement with you.
I, I don't think, I'm in agreement with you. I don't think this needs to be corrected in any way. You know, the other report that came out this week needs to be corrected. There's errors in that report. This report, I don't see errors.
There's a bunch of little, little.
Protect land. We know that.
Talking at the same time, I didn't hear either of you.
Go, yes.
Well, I, I was just saying that there's a whole bunch of little things, but none of them is important enough to bring up as a commission, but. Yeah, there are little things that can be improved on.
Well, one of the little things is that sidebar that says uh. Land conservation costs the taxpayers. Uh, reduced revenue, which is true, but there's a lot more of this story than that. And I think that should not be allowed to stand.
Right, it's sometimes true and not always. It's a, it's a very nuanced. Right, it's sometimes true and not always. It's a, it's a very nuanced question, and that is an inaccuracy.
It's, it's, it's a significant, because people, you know, people who are against conservation will hang on to that as the, and as the full answer. It's not the full answer. I mean, we've, we've done density studies. We know all, what do you, what was that study we did was called? Build out, yeah. I mean, there's a big issue here, and to dismiss it in that way is negative and damaging, I think.
Yeah, so I think we can just request that that sidebar come out. Just don't say it.
That's good.
Yeah, yeah, I think we should bring it, this up because it's in our wheelhouse. Nobody else will do it, so let's, let's just mention it.
Well, I, I could also do it under the auspices of the Kent Land Trust, because, uh, we intend to submit a separate letter that would talk about connectivity and corridor analysis and strategic priorities for conservation that go beyond, uh, you know, just the, the very broad brush that is, um, in, uh, that community asset section right now.
So, um, let's just talk about our procedure for a minute. So as, after tonight's meeting, we're agreeing that we're putting in a letter. And the letter, Connie, I guess you would be doing the final draft on the letter. Um, we, we would be enabling you tonight to go ahead and do that based on the points that we're agreeing. And that has to be in by when? Like, we want to, we want to sort of, sort of get this done. What's the next step?
So it would need to be in before June thirtieth. Uh, it could be read into the record on June thirtieth, or it could just be submitted.
Be good if they had it at least several days before, so they can actually read it and think about it.
Well, not just them, but the public could read it as well, because it would be part of a public.
So, um, how, as of tonight's meeting, then, how do we get this letter produced? I mean, are, are we agreement on, on some of the points that are in there? So that we don't have to reconvene again.
Well, I think we listed a number of things that, um, that we pretty much agree on.
Yeah.
Yeah, there's one thing that I still like to bring up, that I want to hear you vote on. Um, I, I mentioned it last time, that is, um, do we want to, uh, suggest that they change the zoning regulations regarding the primary and secondary, uh, conservation priorities for, um, conservation developments? Because now a primary conservation priority is the steep slopes and the wetlands, and those are unbuildable already. But any developer will pick those as first to say, okay, first priority, those I'm going to protect. And what, and won't be anything else left, um, that I need to protect, because I got my forty percent or fifty percent. Um, if we get rid of that separation between primary and secondary and say, uh, the priorities can depend on the situation. I think that gives the, uh, planning zoning commission and, and input from the conservation commission a bit more leeway, um, to see what, what the real priorities there are.
So you're suggesting eliminate any tiering of those.
Yeah.
Makes sense to me.
I, I think I'm, I'm fine on that, too. It's a little bit, I, you know, it is a little bit detailed, but I think we can fit it under that bullet of conservation and it will, it'll be fine. Um, and I do agree with you on that, Yose. I, I wouldn't, uh, want to like flip primary and secondary, because I know there are, you know, situations where steep slopes and wetlands areas are, you know, are the characteristics that you want to protect more than anything else, and they can be built on in certain circumstances. So I just think having a, uh, having a list of things that would be valuable to protect in conservation developments is probably a better way to go than having, you know, this, this, you know, this kind of a staging of prioritization. So if I were to turn around the draft, I, you know, within a week, get everyone, you know, get it to everyone. I, if there's substantial, you know, changes, disagreement, edits, additions, things like that, that need to be made, we'd probably need to call a meeting, because we're not supposed to discuss via email. Um, if, you know, I don't really think a disc, like saying, you know, this looks good to me, I, is a discussion. So I, I think that if the draft seems appropriate, then we don't need to convene again in order to get to the point of sending it.
So do we need to do like an official motion that we're, um, we're enabling you to go ahead and do the draft? Is that part of what has to be in, in, in this, the minutes tonight?
I think that's wise. I would second that motion that Carol just made.
I know taking back out here. Carol and Melissa, want to restate the motion?
Um, if you're saying that she's authorized just to do a draft, that sounds like we then have to give authorization again.
No, I, I think.
Correspondence. I think we're, we're authorizing her to make correspondence.
Based on our discussion of the, of the things we want to have P and Z look at. Melissa, you can probably say it better than me.
Uh, we're authorizing Connie to write correspondence that will be sent to the P O C D subcommittee and P and Z. Based on observations we have, um, observations we have through of the, the current draft.
I second it.
Okay. Uh, all in favor, please raise your hand or say aye.
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 And are any opposed? And hearing none, that motion carries. Um, how many of you plan on attending the June thirtieth meeting? I think I will.
Oh, you are. We might have to do it from Kent Falls Brewing.
Second fall.
We might have to do it from Kent Falls Brewing, but we're going to be doing it.
Yeah, anyway, yes, I'll be there.
And you all are invited to the drinks at Kent Falls Brewing, green drinks.
We can practice our, our testimony.
So we're not having a meeting, we're talking about other things.
Depending on how many people attend that June thirtieth meeting, I think it would probably be fine to let our correspondence, you know, rest on its own as opposed to reading it into the record, but let's kind of play it by ear there. You know, I just don't want to, I wouldn't want to cut off anyone else's time who had not prepared written comments.
I'm not sure what you meant, but I think I will go with whatever you say.
Like, sometimes you read the letter into the record.
That night.
Yeah.
So, but you're sending it beforehand, so that's not necessary.
Exactly.
Got it.
Unless we really want to.
No, that's fine.
Um, so is there any, uh, further business on Kent P O C D to discuss, uh, at this time? And if not, I'll entertain a motion to adjourn.
So moved.
I second it.
Right, and it is eight thirteen. It will.
I mean, right.
The recording.